I now call the August 2nd, 2016 regular council meeting to order. Would council members please denote your presence by depressing your yes switch?
All council members are present.
Council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the July 19th, 2016 regular council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on July 25th, 2016.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Miller. Any corrections?
Mr. Mayor, the third to last paragraph of the minutes notes that I had asked for documents from Mr. Kenball, and it's my recollection that Vice Mayor Kathy had made that request. I'd like to see the minutes corrected.
So the correction is to have the minutes reflect that the request for documents was made by Vice Mayor Kathy. With these corrections, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the August 2nd, 2016 bills and claims as audited by the City Manager, V.H. McDonald, with the exception that the bills and claims for the payment of easements and warranty deeds appearing as items eight through 13 on the consent agenda shall be approved contingent upon the actual approval by council of these warranty deeds and easements for the East Casper Zone 3 Water System Improvements Project.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Humphrey, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Any abstentions?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Anything pertaining to Casper College, I will abstain.
Abstention duly noted.
Your Honor?
Yes.
All the same.
Two abstentions pertaining to Casper College from Councilmen's Miller and Pacheco. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With the abstentions of Miller and Pacheco noted, mayor, motion passes.
Okay. Some recognition is in order. Detectives Shannon Daly and Sarah Nelson were recognized by the United States Attorney's Office for their invaluable assistance and outstanding efforts in an investigation and prosecution of a case involving an underage runaway, an adult, and an adult suspect. In the fall of 2015, officers of the Casper Police Department were advised that an underage female had run away from home in California. The runaway was believed to be with an adult suspect in Casper. Officers located the suspect and the runaway. Because of the work carried out by detectives Daly and Nelson, the case was prosecuted, and in December of 2015, the suspect pled guilty to a federal crime. The Casper City Council would like to extend our sincere appreciation to these fine police detectives and for their exemplary work. Do we have detectives Nelson? And detectives Daly? Okay, come up here, we're gonna do the handshake and the smile thing.
We wish her well out of here.
Okay, Sarah Nelson first. Thank you. Thank you. Detective Shannon Daly. Council will now address the main business portion of the meeting. Council carries out business by three types of action. By readings, by, um, three types of action, by ordinance, resolution, and minute action. Ordinances require three readings and votes, whereas the other items are passed by one. Ordinances create or modify law, whereas resolutions and minute actions provide for council to carry out business. These various actions have different publication and public hearing requirements. Items may be considered by consent or not consent. Consent items are typically routine and will not be discussed by council. Items not listed as consent will be discussed by council. There is a process for the public as well as council to remove a title from consent. Council will now hold previous scheduled public hearings for the purpose of obtaining public input. Public hearings are held for items such as annexations, liquor license transactions, passage of the budget, and zone changes. The city attorney will present applicable exhibits on the issue, and the city manager will give council a report. Members of the audience will then be asked to speak either in favor or against the issue, and the council will discuss the issue and act upon it if necessary. Issues have been identified during the development of the documents necessary for the purpose, proposed sale of an approximate six acres of land to the state of Wyoming. At such time that the issues may be resolved, another public hearing will be set. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to by minute action cancel the public hearing concerning the sale of city-owned property to the state of Wyoming.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Kathy, seconded by Councilman Healy. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye.
Consideration of the next item will be by ordinance. Council will now discuss the ordinance for the zone change of a portion of South, the Pop, the South Poplar Street corridor. Because this is not on the consent agenda, it will be open for discussion by council. Please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a council-initiated zone change of multiple properties located in the Old Yellowstone District and South Poplar Street corridor.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Vice Mayor Kathy. City Manager McDonald, please present your report.
Your Honor, the City Council considered this ordinance on July 19th for the first reading and passed it. The ordinance is a council-initiated zone change for the area about a block and a half east of Poplar Street. That moves the zoning back to the original C2 and R4, I believe was generally the zoning in the area. It's been looked at over these years that the form-based code that applies to that area currently really doesn't fit into a residential area, and the recommendation is to move that back to where there's consistency between a half a block east of Poplar and a half a block west of Poplar. This item was considered by the Old Yellowstone District Advisory Committee meeting on June 20th, 2016, and unanimously supported. And the council also reviewed this potential change at a work session on June 28th, 2016. And again, this is the second reading after the council passed it on July 19th.
Thank you. Mr. Michael Reed has asked to speak with us. Mr. Reed, stand and be heard.
Good evening, honorable members of the council. My name's Michael Reed, I reside at 1615 Lucre Drive here in Casper, 82609. I appear before you again this evening as a member of Tinshack LLC doing businesses poplar wine and spirits at 1016 South Poplar. I'm, I'm not here to oppose the zone change. I am simply here to visit with you a little bit more about what I talked about last time I was here, and that is to change Poplar Street to C2. I was invited to an Old Yellowstone committee meeting on the 25th of last month. Chairman Hopkins chaired that meeting, and they, the committee asked me about the zone change. We talked about it, discussed it along with some city representatives there. The Old Yellowstone District was, committee was in favor of changing it to a C2 zone. Hopefully, Mr. Hopkins has brought that to you and let you know that. I was encouraged at that meeting to come down and talk to you again and see if we couldn't move this a little quicker than a year away, so that's why I'm here. So I would love to see you make it a council-initiated event, just like you have. I think it, I think it will help the area. I have since talked to a couple of property owners who, who have property in, in the corridor and currently have houses there that they're trying to get rid of, and they believe that it would, would help them in their efforts of moving their homes to, to a C2 zone.
Thank you.
I'd be glad to take any questions or comments.
Questions or comments to address to Mr. Reed? Okay?
Yeah, I might point out to Mr. Reed that we, we do have it, upcoming items for our work sessions. While we haven't scheduled a date for it, it's, it's on the list.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much.
Much likely, much less likely to take a year than we might have anticipated.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that. Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, and I was the one that originally said, let's roll it into the long-range plan, and with the go-ahead that we heard from Councilman Hopkins, I have no problem at all with going ahead and proceeding, so it should be a matter of when we get it on the schedule and when we get it done.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I appreciate it very much.
I'm willing to forego that.
I, I appreciate that, and I think, I think in the long run, it's a, it's a good move, I really do, and, and it'll be better if I don't have to come down again, I really appreciate that.
Hopefully not on third reading.
Hopefully not on third reading. No, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just for clarification purposes, just so you know, Mr. Reed, we are booked out for our work sessions on the 9th and the 23rd and have no agenda items after that, so there's no reason why we can't do this in, in the month of September, just to give you a sense of how long this might take.
Great, I appreciate that very much, and I know you guys are busy. I appreciate you taking a few minutes to listen to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion? Do we just have it? Councilman Hopkins, so, so the OYD committee really did just?
That's correct.
Green light?
The OYD committee met. We discussed a number of issues, including the, the small lot size that's currently along Poplar Street, and the fact that it would be very difficult to get any curb cuts, maybe one or two, but that's up to the Department of Highway Department, that's not gonna be up to us. And I think the feeling of the group was that it probably fits better with C2-type zoning, and that's the likely scenario for that street anyway. So, they were in agreement that we should go back to that.
Thank you. Councilman Healy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, while the discussion of Poplar Street itself is, is relevant to rezoning, and, and I support the notion of considering rezoning Poplar Street, the item at hand is, is really Cedar Street, and I, I continue to believe that the residents on Cedar Street largely support this rezoning, and that it should go forward.
Right. So, we're not exactly kicking the can down the road. But, uh, we are gonna do this first. Is that what I'm getting? All right.
That's correct.
Okay. Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Okay. Council will now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 8A1, a resolution authorizing the exception of memorandum of understanding with CRU Casper LLC for the privately financed development of a conference center and publicly funded improvements of adjacent public infrastructure. Item 8A2, a resolution authorizing submission of a grant application to the Wyoming Department of Transportation for the Transportation Alternatives Program for Phase 2 of the Casper Mountain Road Trail Project. Item 8A3, a resolution authorizing an application for a grant to the Wyoming Water Development Commission for the CY Booster Station Replacement Project. Item 8A4, a resolution authorizing an agreement with SCS Field Services, the Casper Balefield Landfill Gas Collection and Control System Project. Item 8A5, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Car Coatings LLC for the Golf Course Water St, Water Storage Tank Painting Project. Item 8A6, a resolution authorizing change order number six to the agreement with ITC Electrical Technologies for remote site communication modules for the SAM H. Hobbs Regional Wastewater Treatment Facility PLC Upgrades Project. Item 8A7, a resolution authorizing a contract for auxiliary, auxiliary water service between the City of Casper and the Town of Evansville. The next four resolutions will authorize right-of-way easements for the new water transmission main for the East Casper Zone 3 Water Systems Improvements. Item 8A8, a resolution authorizing an easement with CE Swinney LLC. Item 8A9, a resolution authorizing an easement with the CW Corner LLC. Item 8A10, a resolution authorizing an easement with the Country Club Village Partnership. Item 8A11, a resolution authorizing an agreement with NOM, Chui, Fun, and Tu. The next two resolutions are for the acceptance of water, pardon me, warranty deeds from CE Swinney LLC for the East Casper Zone 3 Water System Improvements. Item 8A12, a resolution accepting a warranty deed for land for a water pump station. Item 8A13, a resolution accepting a warranty deed for land for a water storage tank. Item 8A14, a resolution authorizing first amended loan agreement, first amended promissory note, and first amended assignment and pledge of revenues with the Wyoming State Lands and Investment Board for a loan increase to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan Number 127 for the wastewater treatment plant emergency generator project.
With items A8 through, A8 through 13 contingent, with payment contingent upon approval, the Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Humphrey, seconded by Councilman Powell. Any abstentions or nay votes?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to vote nay on item 8A1.
Any more abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With the abstent, or, pardon me, the nay vote by Councilman Johnson on item 8A1 noted, motion passes.
Council will now consider minute action items. These are routine business items that do not require a resolution. Please read the consent minute action title.
Authorizing the issuance of a taxi cab company license to Doug Esterlein doing business as NC Cabs located at 4805 Highway Street, Mills, Wyoming.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda item just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Humphrey. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Now's the time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with council to come forward. We ask that you please state your name and address. Anyone care to address council?
Good evening.
Welcome, Mr. Zimmerman.
Dale Zimmerman, 3035 Belair Drive. I have something I want to bring up to the council. I've been doing some research on a bill that was passed. This December will be five years that the City Council disarm the citizens that come to these meetings, and I was wondering if City Council members are allowed to carry to the meetings, carry a firearm to the meetings or not? So there's not an exemption.
I, I really don't know.
No, there's, just not allowed.
Mr. Mayor, there's no exception.
Okay.
Thank you for that. And, and I want to thank law enforcement for being here for protection, but with a lot of the things that are going on in this country now, in my mind, it would be a great idea to revisit this and maybe allow us to protect ourselves when something bad goes, when happens. It's kinda like fishing a barrel in this room, except for our one law enforcement officer, and, uh, there's, terrible things have been happening every day in our country. I'd just like you guys to reconsider that.
Okay. Go ahead.
If I recall, didn't we discuss this about within the last two months?
We did. And essentially, the, uh, the consensus was that, again, we, we have a state that's got open carry, but government meetings are the exception to that. So, some of the thinking behind the, not wanting to change it the way it is, is because right now, if you've got a concealed carry, you've been through training, you've been through a certification process, and your background check, and all of that. So, it, it really doesn't make sense that somebody's gonna go through all of that process and enjoy a higher bar of scrutiny than someone who just is open carry and bringing it into a government, government building.
With my concealed carry permit, I can't bring it in here either.
Right, and, and so, so why wouldn't we make that exception?
I personally am open to it.
I, I personally am too. Right.
I mean, the last time it was a five to four vote. It was a, it was a close vote in December of 11.
Well, we can discuss it further, but the, the take from law enforcement also is that, and I, I remember these discussions in 2011, and then Chief Walsh.
Walsh.
Then Chief Walsh, he made a very important point, and that is, yes, we have Second Amendment rights, but if we've got a bunch of people in here in a public forum packing open carry, that it may inhibit the expression of free speech. That was one of the concerns. And I don't, I don't know how you could argue against that, you know? Some people would feel intimidated. And, the, the main point is that we don't need, we, we don't need to change it. We don't need to change it.
But it was changed five years ago.
Well, Keneen was on that, yeah.
Your Honor, if I may, I also remember this, as well as my memory works anymore. The, the request or the recommendation from Chief Walsh was that we align the open carry with the concealed carry legislation that had been recently passed that allowed anyone to conceal carry. So you don't need a permit to conceal carry, anyone can conceal carry, except for in a courtroom, in a city meeting of this sort, I believe in a church, and, and there are about six or seven others that I don't, can't recall off the top of my head. And so the recommendation from the chief was simply that we align the open carry regulations with the recently passed concealed carry regulation. So that's how this all came about, so. Ah, okay, well, fair enough.
The exceptions.
But that's how, that's how it came about.
So far.
And so, uh.
Well, thank you for considering.
Yeah. It was, it was simply about keeping those things in alignment so that there wasn't a discrepancy between the open carry and concealed carry.
And, and personally, I'm with you too. I, I, I would not mind, but it's not just about us. There, there are people who would, would feel that that was, it was a little much.
Me, it's just that criminals don't usually follow the rules.
Right. Right. I understand. Anyway, um, we want to stay aligned, is that, is that what I'm hearing from council? Generally? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
One other thing I'd like to bring up.
Okay.
I, I miss seeing you guys, 'cause I've been between vacation and overtime. But, um, over the Fourth of July holiday, I was at a family reunion with my wife in Iowa and went to a little bitty church in Perry, Iowa, just a little farm town. And on that Sunday, we sang the Star Spangled Banner. But we sang more than one verse, and I'd like to share a verse with you that's in the Star Spangled Banner that many people aren't aware of. And it goes something like this, I try to sing it, but I can't hit those notes. "Oh thus be it ever, when freemen shall stand Between their loved homes in the war's desolation. Blessed with victory and peace, may the heavens rescue land, praise the power that hath made and preserved us a nation. Then conquer we must, when our cause it is just, and this be our motto, in God is our trust. And the Star Spangled Banner in triumph shall wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave." And I would just like to encourage each of you to remember that this country was based on, "In God is our trust," and please look to God when we make decisions that affect all of us, and to ask him for help and assistance that, because he knows all the answers, and I don't know very many of them at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna Steedsland, 533 South Washington, Casper, Wyoming.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm, for one, would not support the gentleman with the open carry. It intimidates me, I don't think it's necessary. I think it's been dealt with by the council, the decision's been made. It, it's just an issue that I don't want to see brought up continually, continually. A lot of us aren't comfortable with somebody packing there. Just 'cause you're certified doesn't mean you can't go off the deep end like the bad guy does. That's, that's just that one. My, my real questions were authorization change order number six on the upgrades? Does that mean that there's been five previous change orders for ITC?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Go ahead. I looked at the, the information, you know, when the initial work was approved, there was a contingency amount, and the contingency amount has not been exceeded. There's still a balance after this change order for the contingency amount. So this all still falls within the general scope of the project as it was initially approved some time ago.
So, that tells me that there's been some changes made that you were aware could possibly come up? If you put aside money for contingency change orders, is that what that tells me?
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. It's common practice in, in almost all of the contracts that we approve, we, we approve the bid amount plus a contingency, which authorizes the city manager, if, if, if the change orders are small, to, to manage that without council's attention. And, and if the, if the change order is of a certain magnitude, then it would come to council's attention for review and approval.
I see. I think this is the second one I've seen for 26,000, so it must be a fairly large amount.
Well, it's, it's the exception to the rule, yeah.
Okay. Car coating? I assume that's not a local contractor for water storage tank painting?
Level.
Level.
Level, Wyoming contractor? Okay. Thank you. That's all on today's agenda?
Thank you.
Anyone else care to address counsel?
Michael Reed, 1615 Licker Drive, Casper, Wyoming. Just wanted to talk to you a little bit about liquor licenses. Seeing the paper last Sunday, there's a lot of concern about the number of liquor licenses and how they're awarded and the costs and all of those things. And I noted that in there you had said that you have a group at the Wyoming Association of Municipalities working on some changes to liquor laws. The only thing I would do is I would encourage you to have that committee work with the Wyoming State Liquor Association. Mike Moser is our director, and I know that your people know him real well. It would just appear to me, and I'm the committee chair of the Government Liaison Committee. So it would just appear to me that we try to sit down and work out some common ground rather than just have a big fight or war, or whatever you want to call it. It just looks to me like there probably is some common ground. We'll probably never agree on what it should be, but I think there is some things that you should probably have those people visit with Mike about.
Mike Moser?
Mike Moser.
M-O-S-E-R?
Yes, sir. And he's the executive director of the Wyoming State Liquor Association.
And he's not going to be annoyed that you're recommending that we contact him?
He always gets annoyed, but no, I've already had numerous conversations with him in the last few days about this. And certainly, we know that this issue comes up just about every legislative session. And, you know, we're already working on the parked licenses. We've already got a committee, one of the legislative committees has recommended some changes to that. And I'm assuming Mike has talked to the municipalities about it, but I don't know that for sure. But we're trying to get him to change that from a two-year period to just a one-year period because there are a number of licenses that are parked right here in Casper.
What was Mr. Moser's capacity with the Wyoming State Liquor Association?
He's the executive director. Yeah.
Mr. Reed, with the liquor association, since you've brought this up, is there a position statement that the liquor association has put together justifying the caps and the restrictions and why we should have a limited number of liquor licenses?
I believe there is, and I believe it falls.
Is there some way we could get ahold of that? I'd be interested in seeing what the rationale is.
I believe it falls in line with the liquor laws that are already there and the reasons behind why they did it. And of course, the caps change. You know, it's all population-based. Every time the population increases, we get more liquor licenses in full retail and we get more bar and grill licenses. And if the population goes down, they don't go away. So there has been a number of additional licenses in the last five or 10 years that have come out in Casper. You know, there's a number of licenses that could be used right now, particularly by the groups that came and saw you last week. Three of those proposals would work under restaurant licenses. Now, you have to dance it around a little, but there's many successful people that have done that, and it would work. And none of these licenses are free. I mean, a lot of people have raised heck about, well, John Huff got a free license. John Huff didn't get anything for free. And he'll work very hard to make that work, and he will. But there is no free. But, you know, a restaurant license is only $1,500 bucks. So you can get in the business, you can sell liquor, you can do whatever you want, just in your facility. You can't retail it. But so it's just some thoughts, but I would really recommend that rather than try and fight it out, we see if we've got some common ground, and if we do, great, and if we don't, then we go from there.
Yes.
Yes, my fellow, Mr. Mayor. Just so you're aware, the Wyoming Association of Municipalities has no position statement. It really is just a study group taking input from the municipalities at this point. Is there a problem? What is the problem? Should WAM take a position on liquor licenses and the bar and grill licenses? And so that's all very much up in the air. But I agree with you that there should be a line of communication there.
I think it's just good to open the dialogue.
I would be very interested in seeing some of that literature if you have.
I will have Mike put together what he's got on that. And I think there's also some literature that probably Tom Montoya has. And Tom is the chief enforcement officer for the State of Wyoming Liquor Division.
Do you know offhand, does it make the case that there's a correlation between alcohol consumption and the number of establishments? Or alcohol-related problems and the number of establishments?
I don't know if the state has done that, but I know there are a number of national studies that Mike has that correlate that. The more establishments they have, the more trouble you have, be it DUIs, be it problems with law enforcement. So and I think he can get you those too. As a matter of fact, he can probably just recommend right to a website for that. But I'll get ahold of him and have him get that information. Do you want me to have him get that to Tracy, and then she can get it to you guys?
Yes.
Easier?
I saw a nod from Tracy, so that's the way we'll handle it.
All right. I'll talk to Mike in the morning, and you can get that information flowing for you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If you don't mind, in answer to Mr. Steenland's concerns, the original contract was for $633,900 and some odd dollars. The first five change orders were for $24,661. And so, no, total for the five. The reason for this change order was because between the time of the award of contract and the purchasing of material, some of the PLC logic interface controllers were discontinued by the manufacturer. So that all had to be redesigned, and as you know, when parts are redesigned, somebody's going to make some, get some more money. So that's the reason for this particular change order is that parts were already obsoleted before we could get them installed. You bet.
All right.
I'm going to hold a mic. Read and come up a second time.
All right.
You bring, my question is parked licenses. Are they, how many are we still have? I'm aware of one.
I thought we had three.
I thought it was three, but I don't remember.
I believe it's three.
Does the council do three, four? I've heard four.
Three.
Three is what's parked?
Yes.
Are any of them close to their three-year term?
I think one's.
They'll have to come back before.
I'm not certain about the term. I know one came in for an extension, and that is the one at, the boat ride extension, I believe, was an extension. No one else has come in with an extension.
Okay.
There's nothing the council can do to try to influence them, to put them into service? Mr. Kathy, excuse me, Mr. Kathy said that it's their money, they can do what they want, and I do buy that. But as a council and trying to generate some money, that's when they come up, which is neither here nor there if you want to address it or not. Council race. Now, I read the editorial boards, council race. And I thought it was pretty much out of line that they pictured one council person that's running and didn't address anybody else. And I also look around here, and I never see any of the people running for council at the meetings. And I don't see a lot of you guys campaigning. So anyway, I guess I just wanted to comment on that, that they pictured one person. And I did call them. They said they interviewed all of you, and that's how they made their choices. None of them had been to a council meeting with the exception of once in a while. So in my opinion, they don't know how everybody works on the council. You go in for an interview, that's the end of it. So anyway, get out there and campaign, some of you. So I would personally like to say it stayed the same. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Park license, it's two or three. I'm not certain what the exact number is, but it's in that range of.
Okay. Two or three parked licenses. We're not quite sure.
We would have to review that.
We'll eventually look up that number. No for sure.
It's more than zero.
Yeah.
It's more than zero and less than.
Five.
Thirty-seven.
I'm pleased to know that one of them will be activated real soon.
Right.
With the opening of RACCA's pending.
Okay. Anyone else care to address counsel? Okay, well, let's go around the dais, beginning with Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Sir, I'm blocking on your name. Mister, the gentleman just spoke to us.
Oh, Steenland.
No, I'm sorry.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Mr. Zimmerman, I'm sorry. My memory problems. So I appreciate your remarks, and I assure you that for me personally, I try to make all of these decisions with a full understanding of the gravity and the impact these decisions have on other people. And I draw heavily on my belief system with every decision I make up here. And thank you for your remarks.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Hopkins?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Miller?
Again, nothing tonight. Thanks.
Councilman Humphrey?
Thank you.
Councilman Picheco?
I just want to reiterate what Councilman Powell said. Thanks for coming up and talking. It's important that we continue to do that. With people having that conversation, it's vital to hear that. And this is, I believe, this is your chambers, and you should be able to come up and express that. So thank you very much for coming up for anybody that comes up and talks. We appreciate that. So that's all I've got.
Councilman Hiley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple reflections on tonight's meetings and votes. The Platte River Trails grant request was approved this evening to extend to Phase Two the trail which goes up from Casper College up to the Rotary Falls. If you recall, Phase One, we made a TAP grant request for $375,000. And Phase One construction is expected to start this year. I like the trails that we, the trail network that we have in the city, and I'm really pleased that we're able to advance the quality of life with grants and grant money helping us do that. This evening, we approved the grant request to continue the efforts of the walkability, or to improve walkability and pedestrian safety in Casper. I'm pleased with that vote and with staff who works to get these grant requests put together. I also, on the subject of the Parkway Plaza MOU, voted in favor of the MOU with the owners, knowing that there are some concerns in the public that the company has had recent issues with bill payment and payroll. However, I think the MOU contains a multi-step, well, I know that the MOU contains a multi-step process that requires demonstrations of advanced planning and financial capacity by that outfit prior to the city committing any funds. And those, any funds that the city would commit are for improvements to public infrastructure and not private property. So with that in mind, I voted in favor of the MOU, and I appreciate the structure and form of the MOU. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson?
Not a whole lot. I've been out of town. My attendance on Tuesday's work session is contingent upon. If not, the Army will let me. So we'll see. If I'm here, then I'm here. If I'm not, then you know why. That's all I have.
Your Honors?
Thank you. Vice Mayor Kathy?
There was no CNFR meeting this month, so nothing to report there. That will start again in September. As Mr. Zimmerman pointed out, there is a second verse to the Star Spangled Banner that probably 90% of, because I believe what you quoted was from the second verse. It may have been. Is it? I know it's about this long in a book that I've got. And so, yeah, and I may have had the wrong verse, but most people don't even realize there's anything more than the one verse. So I think that's very admirable that some people do realize some of our heritage. So thank you for that. Beyond that, everybody have a good week. Should be a nice weekend. According to Don Day, we're supposed to have some moisture come Thursday. And as a local boy makes good, I don't know how many of you heard about the guy that jumped from 25,000 feet into the net, but Mr. Day from Cheyenne, Wyoming, was the lead weather man that was monitoring the winds and giving the direction to that gentleman on how to fly to land within that net. So very big expertise here within Wyoming with our local Wyoming weather people. So I would give a congratulations to Mr. Day.
Cool. I haven't had any meetings yet. I am recently back from a trip to Oregon. And Casper, as we know, is on the Oregon Trail. People kept coming through here for like seven decades, many of them on foot. They were going to Oregon. And after looking around in Portland, I know why. It's really nice out there. Anyway, as for business, last meeting, Ken Ball addressed counsel with an issue, and counsel is aware and considering it, and will give a response at some point to let him know where we're at. Anyway, the next meeting of the city council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 PM Tuesday, August 9, in the council's meeting room, and a regular council meeting to be held at 6 PM Tuesday, August 16, in the council chambers. Counsel would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Seconded. Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Miller. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
While members voting nay, motion passes.
Meeting is adjourned.